How's that?
Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's May 8th of 2025. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. For my God and in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Right? Welcome, everyone. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, any discussion? Any changes? Okay. All those in favor of the agenda as is, please say aye.
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 Post. Okay. Chugging right along here. Public comment, no public is here at the moment. New business, we don't exactly have any new business, so we can move down to old business. And pick up where we left off with the town attorney three weeks ago. In regards to what to do with our subdivision ordinance. So he left us with some alternatives. And some ideas for, well, one idea anyway. For looking at other subdivision ordinances. And he mentioned that we could try to cobble together just the subdivision ordinance. He thought there were materials out there to do that. And he also mentioned this might be an opportunity to do a unified set of regulations, which would include zoning and subdivision.
Right.
Did I miss anything?
Nope, that's pretty, pretty good summary.
Okay. Where would you all like to start the discussion on this?
Go ahead, Norman.
Well, thank you. Dana and Bill and I met. We.
Since, since our last meeting?
Yeah. Do we meet?
Nope.
No.
You and I talked.
Yeah, you and I talked, right? It, it's a, it's, it's a mixture. We looked, I looked, I think Dana's also looked, I'm sure Bill has, at the Bristol subdivision regulations. And they are interesting. My sense is that they are better crafted than what we have, or even what we look to do. They're better organized, more detailed. And the towns are about the same size, although they have a business center, sort of, in Bristol, which we don't have here. The the problem I see with them and for us adopting them is that they are highly integrated and interconnected to their zoning ordinance. Including multiple references to the zoning administrator, the development review board, other types of administrative provisions. I didn't study in detail. But tied to for lack of a better word, more sophisticated approach, sophisticated, modern approach than we have. The I, I had a couple of thoughts on how to proceed.
Okay.
If we decide to proceed with zoning originally before, if we decide to recommend to the select board that we do that. One is that somebody should speak with Kevin in some detail about how the Bristol town of Bristol proceeded with the zoning ordinance. My sense is that they must have had outside help and maybe I, I don't know, but maybe there's a boilerplate that they work from. It's close to 80 pages long, so I think some insight from them would be very helpful, or from Kevin, because it's the community in which he lives. I don't know that he represents it, but I know that he lived, he said he lived there.
He did.
Whether there's a model out there, whether the VLCT has one, whether they hired an outside expert and what the cost was, because it's not something I feel that any of us has the expertise to undertake independently, like with the subdivision regulations. It's just not something, for example, I don't think, I think there are 20 pages of definitions that for the unified ordinance, which is the subdivision. So that's my take. It's nothing substantive at this point. But I think questions worth answering, whether you want to talk to him, whether you want Bill to talk to him, whether you prefer to me, me to talk, whatever. You know, I have no feelings about that, but it ought to be done and could be done by our next meeting. Give us a little more foundation to work on and know what we're talking about.
And then why do you think, I'll hand this over to you Dana in just a second.
By the way, I also checked just out of curiosity that the populations are in 2020 of the two communities are 200 apart. Rutland Town, the statistics, I went from 3,900 and Bristol almost 3,800. But they do have a downtown district. You know, a, a center.
Yeah. I, I don't think that that really matters a whole lot, Norman. The, the layout was less important to me than the integral nature that you mentioned. We're much more spread out and we cover a larger geographic area than Bristol.
I didn't check that. That's a good point.
I just know Bristol and I know our layout. I mean, we're pretty large. We're larger than the city in terms of geographic area. And Bristol is much, much more compact. But, so that, that for me is not as much of an issue as the integrated nature of the subdivision regulations. In fact, the subdivision regulations are the are basically an appendix to the unified regulations. And so for me, the stumbling block came with the number of references to zoning, zoning administrator and other aspects of zoning.
Absolutely.
And how they could be, I thought it might be just a find and replace, but after really looking at it, I think that it's more than that. And trying to disentangle the subdivision regulations would be more of a challenge than I had originally thought when, I think I was the one who asked him to get us the subdivision regulations, thinking that it would be a standalone document.
Even when we spoke, you were of that feeling. That it was just, no, we couldn't accomplish it.
Well, well, I told you, I did tell you, Norman, that I hadn't done the research and the and the coverage that you had done. And as I went back and looked at it, even though I didn't finish the whole document, it became clearer to me that it was more integrated and meant to be a whole. Including references to the town plan in terms of incorporating all of the documents. They're all meant to function together. And so at, at that point, as I had said to you, you, you had an advantage over me. You had done more homework than I had. But I, I do believe that having done more and taken into consideration your perspective about the nature of the document, I would find it difficult to just adopt, adopt the subdivision regulations without some major reworking. And then we would be, we would, there are a number of references to the developmental review board. I thought originally that that could just be replaced with us as the planning commission. But I got more and more skeptical as I delved into the documents. So I I, I think the way to go would be to have unified set of regulations. In fact, in here, they referenced other ordinances that are incorporated as part, as what, what did he reference? Stormwater regulations?
Floodwater.
Floodwater regulations, that those are also included in their unified regulations. And the more I thought about that, I'm thinking, why? Why, why have these standalone sets of regulations when they would function better, more efficiently, more effectively as a unit? So I, and that's I came to share your opinion, Norman.
That it wasn't as easy as Kevin led us to believe to tease out.
That I was disappointed. Originally, I thought that it might not be that bad. I had read about a third of the document when Norman and I talked. That's what he was referencing. I said, yeah, Norman, you've, you've got an advantage over me. You've read it twice, the whole document, and I've not made it through once yet. And as I went back and read more, didn't finish it, but as I read more, I I began to think, wow, this may not be quite as challenging as the work we've been doing. But it's a heavy lift to try to disentangle. I mean, I, I like the structure. I gotta say this. I, I like the structure. I like the focus. I like the sections. I like the succinctness of each paragraph. There aren't things making multiple references, or at least I don't think, well, they do reference certain things. They come back and circle and reference, but it, it's mostly as a cross-reference, I think. And it is much more user-friendly and laid out in a thematic way. Kind of like Bill, what we were trying to work towards. So following that model would be great. I just don't think we can, I, I thought we were going to be able to get away with just taking this, changing something.
Copy and paste.
Yeah, I, I was, I was disappointed that how cumbersome it was going to be, or seemed to be.
You've done.
I'm done.
One of the things that occurred to me in reading it, and I, I took a look again at the stormwater, not the stormwater.
I didn't.
River corridor ordinance that is pending and which is kind of in limbo with the situation with FIMOB, which is another thing to talk about. But I looked at that and that's, that's its own form of zoning. Because it says what you can do with your property if it's located in certain ways. Subdivision doesn't go that far. Subdivision doesn't regulate the structure, doesn't regulate location, the most part, all that kind of.
There was another reference in here in the subdivision regulations that referenced development. But I, I realized that the only reason that they could put that in is they could cross-reference it to their zoning ordinance.
Well, they had a plan unit development, so they had another one as well. And but, you know, we probably could work around it. I think it would be difficult. I don't know that it would strip it necessarily of its effectiveness as a subdivision regulation. But one of the things I started to do this afternoon, and I got interrupted and didn't finish, was take a look at the list of ordinances that the town has and see how many would, would likely be impacted if we had zoning. Because maybe, you know, in effect, I suspect, but I don't know, to some extent, we have defect default zoning, so to speak, with all these separate regulations that have been acted over the years. But
But there's no unifying theme. There's no unifying authority. There's
A unifying procedure.
Procedure, right.
You know, it's a wonder we haven't run into more, more difficulty and challenges in litigation.
And that was a major point of his, that what we have now would not hold up in court.
Right.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Subjects us to a lot of, right.
Why don't we continue to go around the horn if others want to join in? Andy, after three weeks, what are you thinking?
Thinking about it, when, if I read what both of you are saying, you feel that a zoning document is the way to go. Am I reading that correctly or am I going too far?
I would say you've got that probably 90% right. From my perspective, let me offer the extra 10%. It's not just the zoning document. It's the integral nature of the, what's called the unified regulations, of which zoning is one piece, a big piece. And from which all of the other ordinances are connected and serve the purpose of a unifying theme and providing the guidance for all towns, all town residents. So it, it, you know, it's like, it's like a core component. It's not the be all and end all. But if you don't have it, you've got these gaps. And then that's what appears to me to be an extremely weak point in trying to do this as, as a standalone ordinance.
So in that case, I, I agree with you. I feel that we should move along. If it's not going to work standalone, historically, we haven't had said zoning here in Rutland Town, but times have changed. You know, it's been
I think we owe it to the select board to, if, if we determine to go forward to really be prepared in terms of expenses, time, process, the whole thing. I, I wouldn't be ready to go forward at the next meeting and say, this is what we think, because I think we have a lot of work to do to really dig into it more. And certainly a conversation with Kevin would be one of them. Maybe you should come again, or don't feel by zone, go into executive session. Not do it separately. I don't care about that, but the one thing about this unified ordinance is it really opens our eyes. You know, and give us a good look at what a comparable community has done. And how, how well I think it's done. You know, if you just, if you haven't looked at it, Bill sent it out, just go through the index, go through the table of contents of the 80-page zoning ordinance and you'll see, and then go through the subdivision and see how well organized it is as opposed to what we have and how detailed procedurally, it certainly gives, not that we've had a problem, because we haven't, but it certainly gives the developer, the homeowner, whatever. The Bristol one really sets a roadmap. Even for sketch plans and final plans.
Well, we haven't had a problem, but, but we're getting closer and closer to a point where, you know, people are developing, you know, just in certain areas of town. And it's becoming closer and closer to one another.
The, the other thing that concerned me is that the zoning ordinance has to be integrated with the town plan. I mean, the town plan lays out certain things.
But so should the bile, the subdivision regulations, should be integrated with the town plan, so.
And, you know, I don't really feel I have a command over that town plan. We don't you know, we do it, we put our time in, and then it doesn't come up. We're not faced with it for another five years or whatever the period is to revise it.
Howard.
Well, it's unfortunate that we don't have more things that we can look at, but it's a, it's a tough situation that we're in, no question about it. I mean, we yeah, Bristol is certainly a good starting point, but there's not too many Bristles out there, I guess, that we could even look at to try to get other ideas, but it's a uncharted waters. We're trying to, what, what we're trying to do for Rutland Town. And we need all the figuring and help we can get. And it's, it's a challenge. And you guys that have been looking at it can see 80 pages of whatever, you know?
I don't know. Yeah, I have to, I'll admit, Howard, that I haven't read the zoning regulations. I haven't spent time on those those 80 pages. Norman may have done that. I've only been focusing on the 15, 17 pages, 15 pages of just the subdivision regulations.
And that's what, that's what Kevin referred to. Didn't he say 17 pages or something? He was using a number.
Yeah, it's under 20.
Yeah. Right. And, and, and that was, that piqued my interest, Howard. But what I after talking with Norman and, and expanding my, my reading in the document, I, I came to the conclusion that you can't just adopt those 17 pages as a cut and paste, as Norman said earlier. It, it's, it's too intertwined with other references, whether it's the town plan, whether it's other ordinances, or whether it's the zoning regulations. And, and that's what disheartened me a little bit, because I thought that the task would have been simpler. Now, there may be a way, and this will be a question for Kevin, there may be a way to take the essence of this and port them over, put the contents over as our operating subdivision regulation, subdivision ordinance, while we develop other stuff, because what's, I'm not going to say scares me, but what concerns me is that what we have has been categorically rejected. So continuing on with something that is really not functional is, is something that we need to address.
Sure.
I, I just thought originally, I think it was Andy or Sherman, one of them, said something about, you know, maybe we could you know, a, a, adopt this as a phased approach and incorporate first adopt the subdivision regulation component. After reading more and talking to Norman, I don't see a clear path to doing that. And that would be a question I would want to ask Kevin.
And as a strategy, I'm not sure that's the best way to go either.
I'm not, but he, he made that suggestion, so, you know.
So I did bring this up with the select board a few weeks ago, that we had spoken to Kevin and that he had pretty much categorically informed us that what we have would not hold up in court. And, and we discussed that a little bit, but that's as far as we went. But I think they got that message. And they understood it. And they're waiting for us to come and come back and, and, you know, tell them what we think.
Have you shown them the letter from Kevin?
No, I don't think that Mary was copied on that either.
Well, might
You're talking about the 17-page letter?
Yeah, you might, it might be worthwhile considering giving a copy of the letter to Mary so she knows where we're coming from more specifically.
Right, right.
And a thought just occurred to me. I think Bill said very few towns have subdivision regulations that don't have zoning. But there are towns nearby such as Wallingford and Clarendon, which are basically the same size as we are, that may have zoning ordinances that may be less cumbersome. I mean, 80 pages, that's a lot of digging. You know, and it, I mean, what I did with the subdivision regulations is I went through five, five or six pages at a time. Because it was, it was, after a while, you, your head was spinning.
Right.
It just was, it was just the kind of thing I couldn't really digest all in one sitting. So if, if there are others like Howard, you know, kind of implied we ought to look at, maybe there are some nearby towns that.
Yeah, but it might not just be by population, because, you know, Rutland Town is such, has such a huge retail presence.
Right.
For the city and for the town. And, and not, not every, every town of 4,000 has a South Main Street.
Right.
You know?
Now, I understand that, but they still have zoning.
Right.
And they still have subdivision regulations, and maybe their subdivision regulations are, are succinct. You know?
I mean, Woodstock is about our size, but in terms of population, they're nowhere close to our size in terms of geographic spread.
Shouldn't be other considerations, you know, additional considerations.
Yeah, I mean, we have much more development, much more, I mean, economic development. We have manufacturing.
Manufacturing as well, yeah.
And Woodstock doesn't have that. They have, they have a tourist industry that is very well-developed. We don't quite have that, but we have we have a huge, like you said, retail sector. And you know, we, we both have opportunities for outdoor recreation. So you know, it's
And, you know, and the Walmart supercenter coming in, it's, it's, it looks like it's coming. And, you know, what does that lead to?
Right. And, and I think that that would be help, it would be helpful if there were a plan in place to address what possible changes might be desirable in terms of our land use allocation, once something like a supercenter comes in.
Right, right. And, and the planets are kind of aligning here. I mean, our, our town plan is due, I mean, it's due to be finished in '28. So a lot of towns, some towns start two years before. Definitely, you know, if you wait till the year before, that's, that's like the only thing you're doing for that year.
The other thought Barbara that I had.
Two years would be like next year.
Right.
We would start.
One of the things that occurred to me I made a comment either last meeting or the one before, that we didn't have a lot of land to be developed. And I have to back off of that, because I've ridden around and there's still a lot of land, certainly on the north end, going north from Route 7 and Route, and Grove Street and that kind of thing. There's a lot of open land. And there's other areas where there's open, a lot of open land too. So it, my observation doesn't really hold very much weight. I withdraw it.
And we don't have specific designations. We have general designations. And we might want to be a little bit more specific in how that, any future developmental use is. Is.
Yeah, we've got that, we've got a possible village center we could take advantage of.
Yeah, I, I was, I was, I was.
Talk about a pocket park.
I was thinking, Bill, we, we have that, but those are only recommendations. They're not codified and some of them allow. Uh, uh, interpretation for multiple uses and I, I, I think that. A, a more structured approach such as zoning would allow there to be more. Directed. Development. And what I mean by directed is I mean, not telling people, but uh, re- requiring people to. Tie in their development ideas with the town plan. And with uh, the regulations that we would have. So that it can be planned and not, and not chaotic. The, the other thing though, on, on, on the downside. Because I know that this is going to be considered. Uh, the number of references to the developmental review board. Is significant. And uh, that would require the constitution of another entity. By the select board. To um, manage and implement. These. Uh, unified regulations. Do I have that right, Bill?
I, I think, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of, we're, we're doing a lot of forward. Thinking and forward discussions, but there's a discussion that needs to be had before any of this gets anywhere.
Right.
And I think. Formulating. Communication from. Between the bodies needs to happen because. You go and they say no, and then it comes back here and like we, you, you're in favor of it, so there largely needs to be a, a different. Way of communicating, whether we get. Uh, a recommendation from Kevin, writing on his. You know, what he thinks, the direction we should go, and it goes to the bo- to both the board and the planning commission. Or the planning commission, you know, comes to the board meeting and, and talks with them, like pla- plan a meeting for that, like.
Yep.
I think when you brought it up, you know. Not really abstract, but like. Lob, lob that balloon out there.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't suggesting that, Bill, because I'm, I'm familiar with the history.
Right, but until you get buy-in from them, none of these other conversations matter.
You're absolutely right, and but that was my thought about having Kevin here. We're consulting forever with him, or one of the thoughts.
So.
Because.
Go ahead.
It is a huge step for the community.
Yes.
And historically. Um, there's been a lot of refer- a lot of resistance to it. I, I've lived in, I lived in, you know, in a town for. Close to forty years and every so often it.
But the voters actually passed it, Norman. We, we've talked about that a couple of times. They were actually adopted. Zoning was adopted. I, I remember that. It was, uh, zoning regulations were approved by the voters.
By. By the select board?
The voters.
That was, but that was a survey. It was only a survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was never the document, never went to the voters. That as I remem- I'm sure of it, actually.
I, I think that.
Sorry, I missed.
There may be some. I won't say misunderstanding, but maybe not an, not an understanding of what. What, cause it's only been talked about as the six letter work. They're ever talking about, here's the things we're looking at, including with it. We're not looking to include, you need to paint your house number seven eggshell white. We want to include things like setbacks, we want to include things like livestock. Want to, those kinds of things that I get phone calls about every single week. Like, those are the things that people want to know what to do. And in the absence of it, it's more of a problem than less of a problem, right? So there are some board members who. Was fine, they, they don't want more government, that's fine. But. This is not really more government, this is government directing people. In the, the, in what's best for the residents, like you said, there's more development happening, it's getting closer and closer and closer. As we do more subdivisions, that's five acres now, five one acre parcels, now it's five houses at a one house, like there's more people closer together. It's like we do with the short-term rentals, take care of it before it's a problem, because once it is, it's too late.
Yeah.
And, and new housing is needed.
Yeah, and new housing is. Uh, and, and housing. Housing, transportation. And uh, job opportunities are key factors in driving economic development. I mean, it, it. It, it's clear, whether it's our state or somebody else or, or a huge municipality, those three things have to play, play in together. And if we aren't considering those or plan to address those, then we're short selling ourselves. That's maybe why we're having such difficulty. I- in, in Rutland County or at least in our area for maintaining a population with, with, with the city. The city's population is one of the, is, is the biggest loss of population. Statewide since the twenty twenty or twenty-ten uh, census, that's, I, I don't understand, I mean. There, there are attractive features and there are opportunities. I, I don't. I, I am having difficulty fathoming why we're struggling. And then I come back to those three factors that we need to address, and that's squarely in our, our wheelhouse.
So, so my, my thought is like, I think, I think the group has, for a very long time, this group. Is generally in favor of something. We're not quite, we're not down to like the nitty-gritty yet, but there needs to be a conversation with the select board about. Here's what we're looking at and here's what we're not looking at, like the things that we're not gonna do. So, the things that we are not wanting to do versus the things we do want to do. And what that involves and it is. Looking at the state statute for subdivisions, it is practically impossible to write these things without.
Oh, zoning, right.
I, I don't, I don't, it's, it's, it's practically in the chapter, like zoning is in the chapter, subdivision is part of it, like I don't. I- i- it's, it's like they assume you have it or like, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do this and. I don't think, you know, there was one about, you know, we, we said we might, we, we can't use it and it's like, great, less government, that's okay, but the problem is. We don't have, then we, if we just, if it goes away because we, it's not good because. We can't deny anything, because if we deny it, they're just gonna challenge it in court and they're gonna win, so what's the point of denying it? That's not good either. So we don't, we're, we're kind of tying our own hands, so, okay, so it goes away, but if it goes away, then there's no rules, which is very bad.
Chaos.
Yeah, right.
The more I hear. This discussion. And particularly Bill's input, and you've, you've nailed it. The more I think we need to do a little more research. Maybe meet with Kevin once. And then have a meeting. Joint meeting of the two boards, the select board and us, and discuss what. Everybody has talked about tonight, but particularly what Bill has said and just. Then in the first. With, with the Bristol. Subdivision regulations, in the first five pages. When I went through it the second time, I just decided to see. How interrelated it was to. Uh, the zoning ordinance. And there were twenty-five references to the development review board. In the first five pages.
Right, it's, it's a good document, but it's, it's a piece, it's not a thing.
Well, that's exactly what Dana said.
So, so, right, so. Do you want, so do the three of us want to get back together and look at something? Do we want, what, what, what do you want, what do you want to do next?
And what would be the research, number one?
Well, I think.
We still looking for towns with just subdivisions?
I don't.
You know, Barbara, let, let me, let me try to offer a focus, because as we've been talking, and, and I've been thinking. A- after our conversation the other night, Norman. There are two things and something that Andy said this evening as well, or something Bill just said. There are two points that I think are essential to any work that we do from now on. Whether that's the three of us taking this on or whether it's a component of what we do with the select board. And, and it may be both. But there are two things that I think are essential, that we don't, we don't go anywhere unless we address them. One is a common vision of what we want. And that common vision has to include this like. The second is a roadmap. And the roadmap is, okay, if we want to embark on this journey. How are we going to get to the endpoint? And that includes the resources that we need, the regulations that we're going to include, and some guidance. Slash support in getting there. Now. The common vision, Kevin may be able to help us, may not be able to help us. Either way, we need, we need to be meeting jointly with the select board or some. Subcommittee of the select board that's empowered to. Help us make decisions or to make decisions collectively with us. With respect to the roadmap. He's drafted this, he's worked on this, he lives in Bristol. He could help us identify those components. And maybe a timeline and also maybe the steps.
But maybe, maybe not Kevin, but maybe someone on, on.
Yes.
Bristol because.
Absolutely.
They may be more cost effective.
No, no, I, I'm sorry, I, I was only using Kevin be, as a, be, as a placeholder for somebody with the knowledge. To guide us through the process.
So, so, you know, I, I think the, you're talking about the roadmap, I think that's very, very appropriate. You know, as I. We are. We are six months away from starting budget talks, which is just ridiculous. Budget talks for next year. So if we can sooner have a discussion with the board. And at least hopefully get some consensus from them on how they want us to do this, if they say. Let's, let's take a look and see what they would look like, because I think part of the problem is that. The, the, let's see what it is versus, I don't want it at all. You know, I hope there's some colla- there could be some collaboration, but if we start that conversation and over the next few months. We work on the roadmap about here's what we're going to need, then come. November, we can put in the budget, what we're gonna need, because we're gonna need help from people outside of the town.
Right.
July of next year, which also is gonna be when we start the town plan, so I think professional services for this group needs to include. The capacity to go out and, and pay people to come help us with some of those things, so it gets done more efficiently.
Okay, good point, Norm.
I, I agree a hundred percent. And part of the basis for my agreement is that if you look at the zoning regulations, I can't fathom. And this is no put-down, that a town prepared them. Without an outside consultant, not necessarily a lawyer.
Right.
But there must be, and maybe the League of Cities and Towns can help us, but there must be some kind of professional.
Some sort of regional, regional planning commission maybe could help us.
No, no, I think outside consultants who specialize.
The regional planning commission, yeah.
Oh, okay. W- whether you do it, whether your office does it.
Yeah.
Now, whether your office does it or your office is aware, but I think if we're gonna go to the select board. A quick to have a positive. Productive discussion, we need to know what we need to do this. And I think basically that was what you were saying. And I think a quick phone call to Kevin to ask him how Bristol got there. Would, would really open the door to some discussion, whether he says, no, they did it themselves. Or he said, no, they hired somebody, who was it? And at least get, open the door to some kind of examination that will inform us so we can talk. Intelligently to the select board.
I think if they can be on board with.
I'm sorry.
I think if the select board could be. In favor of. Let's look at what it would, let's look at what it could look like. And, you know, we gotta, we, we, we know what we have is not working, we have to do something and. I don't know if, if there's really many other options at this point. So, I think if we can get some consensus from them on. Saying, okay, so let's put in the budget. Some funds to hire some people to come talk to us or put together some rough drafts or something and. And, and go from there and then have them look at it and be like. You know, this, we've got, we, 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 we all know, we all know that we have to do something. And it seems like the something options are pretty limited at this point.
Well, I think.
Yeah, that's the next part of the message. I think that they got, I think they got the message that we have to do something.
I think, I think that. You know, just to clarify if I may, Bill. One, we have an ordinance that's unenforceable. I'm not sure that it's been put to them in that language yet.
It has. It has.
Yeah, do they understand that we're flying blind? Basically.
I think so, yeah, and, and they know why, they know that, like Kevin said, the subdivision is, is so filled with. References or zoning-like components.
That we don't have the authority to.
Alright, so that message has been delivered, but we can reinforce it.
Yeah.
Secondly, I think, again, we don't talk to them unless we have some guidance. On how to do it and what it's likely to cost.
Yeah, I, I, no, Norman, I, I, I'm gonna disagree with that because that, that's, that, that is. It really doesn't matter. What matters is. Um, we need to look at what the common vision is, because we have to do something. Once we understand what the something is, then we can put a price tag on it. That's what Barbara was talking about. But to have, to say that we have to wait to figure out how much it's going to cost.
I don't mean, I, I didn't mean to mislead you, just get an idea. Just a, a rough idea, if Bristol hired an outside consultant, who was it and can we find out what it was? This is an example, not conclusive.
Okay.
Just, just an outline of information. That I would rather go to the meeting with that and never get to it. If it turns out that, then go empty-handed and they raise it and we don't have an answer and we're another two months down the line. In delay, we, we gotta put the pedal to the metal here. And so it's a phone call, Dana, whether we use it or not doesn't make any difference, a phone call.
We, we know I've been talking about Bristol's ordinance. And so how far in your opinion is Bristol's ordinance far from what we would need? Or perhaps bringing in Bristol's and one other towns. And going through it. Obviously, this, this ordinance that Bristol wrote is, you're in agreement that, that it's substantially correct. Am I, am I wrong in taking that?
Like a hundred and twenty pages combined, right?
Yes.
Yeah, which is really for combined, for what it is combined, that's not a lot.
No, the current, they're, they're, they're including in the unified. Uh, regulations, multiple ordinance.
Right, right.
The two key components of which are zoning and subdivision regulations. That represents ninety percent, well, maybe not.
Which, 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 which makes sense, but again, it's, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of regulation in there. But starting with that and being like, okay, so what are they, what are, first of all, what are they doing that we won't do? We can, you know, and then what are they doing that we want, we, we want to do? And then is there anything else, you know, you know, so I think, I think that's a good example. Um, and you know, Kevin's a little biased about it, which is fine, but, but like, I think Carrington has something similar. Zoning and subdivisions in references to their show, there, there are, there, there certainly towns that have both are, are. More prevalent than the ones that we, we're, we're business, basically two of us in this.
Can I?
We go to Howard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
First is, I wonder how they're handling existing conditions and situations, because that. Questions, I wonder how they're handling existing conditions and situations because that question is going to come up. I'm sure in a lot of, in a lot of minds is what, you know, what's going to happen? We've had. We've had everything this certain way for all these years of, of my property. And now what? Has, has that, has that been something you stumbled onto, Norm or, or Dana?
Well, there, there's a component of zoning called non-conforming uses. With grandfathers in everything, they're not going to have to tear down anything.
Right.
But the zoning contemplates non-conforming uses. I didn't go through to look, but.
So when it goes into effect, that's your baseline.
That's your baseline.
Yeah.
The other thing, um, Howard is that, like we've been doing on the planning commission. We, uh, um, we entertain waivers and we grant them. So there would be an opportunity, even if zoning were adopted, to have a process for requesting waivers. So it's not like it's the be all and end all, something with a legitimate purpose could be waived. Depending on the, the common benefit, but it's not, you're not just going to. You're not just going to waive something because somebody wants to put it up against their property line. And the neighbor doesn't want them to encroach it. I mean, that, you're not going to waive that. But if there's a reason that you have some obstacle in your way. That would prevent a sewer line from going into place unless you had a waiver. We could do that. I mean, I'm just making this stuff up, but you know, th- there are those. Opportunities to have a, a meaningful discussion.
To create.
So let's get back.
Right, that's exactly right, Howard, exactly right.
So let's get back to what you refer to Dana as the common vision. To use with, to work with the select board. Uh, with, um, what are our next, what are the best next steps?
Interesting that you asked that because I was, I was hoping to jump there a few minutes ago, but we did a bird walk. Uh, first, I'll concede to my esteemed elder colleague on the right side.
You fine, okay?
What's that? Do you want me to repeat that? No, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah. I got five minutes, I have to leave at seven thirty.
You, you, you've got five minutes. Well, I won't talk about you for the next five minutes, but I will say that it, it's probably worth. Getting some information and then you just kind of volunteered yourself, Bill, because you, you were talking about Killington's. Uh, zoning regulations and they probably have unified regulations as well. My, my question would be, could you fire off an email to a variety of, um. Uh, towns, uh, we can use Bristol, we can use Killington and anybody else that you might think that would have.
How about Brandon?
Brandon, yep. And, and just ask them. How much they budgeted? If they did.
The history, the history of getting it.
Yep, and, and how much they, uh, would estimate that it costs them, one in time. And two in, uh, dollars. Okay, that way we, we're prepared to answer the question. That Norm, um, threw out there. And I, I think he's right, that the better prepared we are, the more homework that we've done, more forward thinking we can be. Uh, the better positioned we are to have a conversation. I would then say to your point.
Sand Fairhaven to the list.
I, I would then say Barbara, uh, that once we have that. It's okay to open up the conversation. To address the select board. Now, the question is, and you probably know better than I, how to go about that? Is that first a, a conversation between you and Mary? Uh, about, no.
Go ahead.
Uh, about how to get this onto an agenda item? Does she want us to, does she want us a, as a team or, uh, uh, the, the whole planning commission or some representative group? To talk to them in a public meeting? Or would she prefer to have a joint meeting where we can, uh, raise this question, only have one?
Yeah, I, I think it should be posed that we would like a meeting with the select board.
Right.
And how would you like that to?
Play out, yeah.
Discuss the future of the subdivision regulations.
Right, and then, so, and would that be then a conversation between you and Mary to just?
That would be, yeah.
Okay. And then you, right, then you decide and you come back and tell us. Or you send us an email and tell us that it's happening on such and such, uh. Uh, an evening at a select board meeting or we're going to have some joint meeting. Which could be at our next planning commission meeting. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm making this stuff up as I'm thinking about it.
About not, I would think. Your statement about the vision, I think it'd be very important for us to go in. Unified is to exactly be able to make our case for exactly what we want and why we want it. And I think that would take us another meeting. To sit down and, and really go over and, and make up the points of what we want on there. Um, specifically why we feel that what we've been talking about using the Z word, you know, is. Why we feel it's important and, and the, uh, and what all the pros are. And certainly there are a lot of them. I mean, certainly most of the, most of the people in the state live. With zoning.
Yes, right.
Population wise, even if I'm despite square miles of land isn't all covered, but I believe that the. The majority, vast majority of the population live under it. And I think, and just one other thing about the towns we're looking at. Hopefully we could find out how long their zoning has been in effect because. We probably would want to model our, take a look more at ones that were just recently created. Rather than ones that have been, that have been in force for a long time and had have been, been piecemeal modified.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that, that's a valid point.
Yeah.
Um, when I was talking about the common vision, you made, you raised a good point, Andy. Of talking about us being on the same page, just in terms of the, the, the points we see that are salient, that are really important. And if the work is falling to us to do it, we need to be able to present a unified, uh, vision about why this work is important.
Yeah.
Do you need Norm to go on the minutes?
Um, no, I think we've got four.
The, um, other, um, the other thing is the, the common vision with the select board. About what we want to achieve in terms of, of, and that may be a, an extension. Of what we're looking at from a planning commission's perspective. But the common vision I was talking about is the common vision between the planning commission and the select board about how. How we want to, what are our point of, uh, what are, what are our common points of interest?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'm going to be devil's advocate here.
Sure.
Suppose we're three, suppose we're fairly in a line. And we're three, two, the other board, select board's three, two. Or two, three. Do we? You know, that could just, do we still continue onward? That's, I would say.
We're, we're at a point where something has to happen.
Has to happen, yes.
If they're like, this is not the plan, the path we want to take, then okay, then what is the path?
Right.
Because there has to be something and, and, okay, if that's, if that's the decision, then there needs to be. A plan B and, and, and it can't be, I'm not sure.
Do, do you remember, Bill, and I, I can't remember. At, at one point we had, even on the planning commission, we had a. A topic and we ended up creating a, a subcommittee, which was almost everybody on the planning commission. And it wasn't the subdivision regs, it was either view sheds or it was something else. And we were a little bit all over the place in terms of what we thought was important. But we all got together and I, I can't remember how it all, all developed. I just remember that Jerry said something to me afterwards, he said, you know, I, I misunderstood you. Or I misunderstood your perspective until we got together and we just focused on these things. I can't remember what that.
View sets for the town plan.
Was that, was that it then? What I remember was that we were having a conversation and all of a sudden things clicked. Where, where everybody had their own, you know, it might have been doing with, something to do with the land use map too. Uh, but I can't remember, but I, 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 I remember that as we sat down and we talked it through. There were more points in common and then all of a sudden something clicked. And we had a productive discussion focused on what we, what we saw in common rather than what we saw differently.
Yeah, I remember that too. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to put it either, but yeah.
But that's the, that's the answer, that the only answer that I can come up with. Because we on this, on the, uh, planning commission here.
Was it, was it talking, I think, was it the short term rentals, like the inspections?
Yeah, we, we went around and around on that.
But we, we, we found our voice and we found our common perspective.
Talking about like the inspections can be very expensive and they want to go through it, but it's like, but yeah, yeah.
There was something, there was, it was a topic like that. Well, we all, we weren't all unified. But we became unified as we had a subcommittee working on it together. And that's the approach that I think we would have to take. To answer your question, Andy, about, you know, if it's split, if it's, if we're unified. And they're split, then we invite them all into the conversation. To see where we can find the greatest unanimity about things that we agree on. And then it's no longer a, a, a positional stance.
Right.
It's a, um. It, it's a collective. Uh, understanding that. You know.
But I don't think we as a group are there yet. We're not there to say this is what we want, this is what the town needs, are we?
I think we're close. I haven't heard anyone say, no, let's not follow the zoning path. Nobody has made the case for subdivisions, for subdivisions only without zoning.
Right. And, and so Barbara, to your, to your point, to your point. I don't know that we need to be before we get them involved in the conversation. We all know the general framework that we need. The details can be worked out as a, as a common team between the select board and us. As we have those conversations because what I believe in is the dynamics of the members of the planning commission. To share, uh, diverse opinions and to get to a common. U- understanding of something that's, that's, that's beneficial. And what I would hope could happen is that by harnessing that collaboration. And bringing all the members of the select board into it, that we could come to a. Consensus, if not a, an absolute, um, decision on what would be. Uh, important. And you know, I, I don't know all of the personalities that well, but I believe in process. And I believe in the ability of each one of our, uh, planning commission members. To be able to strike a chord that would be. Uh, persuasive.
Are we ready for that?
If I could, I think that's. With Dana, I agree with is that. We, we, what we should be looking at for next week's meeting, I think, is to really come up with this, with the points. And we should all think about why we're convinced that zoning is the right thing for this community. And, and come up with points. And be able to get them down on paper.
And what that looks like in terms of what goes into it is open for discussion.
But those, I, I think we all, we, I would say, I don't, I don't know of anyone on this. And I, I, well, I don't know how Sherman and Jerry think, I can't talk with them. As I said, I haven't heard anyone trying to make a case that we shouldn't go to zoning, we should. Try to create subdivision ordinance, a subdivision ordinance that stands alone and what the gain would be overall.
What the gain will be.
Right.
The game, the general game, yeah, I think that's important.
Howard, you, you buy that?
Yeah, I, I. I think that's where we're at, yeah, yeah, there's no other. No other choice at this point to, uh, need to stay as we are or. Or try to look ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're being, and we're being. Uh, strongly encouraged not to keep things as they are because it's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Right. Okay, yeah, that sounds like a great next step. In conjunction with that, who would like to keep? I, I don't know if we want to have Bill do all of this, but does anyone want to help with, you know, just research? Looking at what is out there. For other communities, which Kevin also recommended that we do.
But, okay, so my question is if Bill's sending out an email to a variety of different towns. To gather some information about, uh, cost in terms of time and financial resources. Couldn't he just as easily ask them to send their regulations?
Probably not, but I can, I can, I can, I will try to have that done for the next meeting. I was just given a task at the last board meeting, which I was not anticipating, so. I will.
I don't think it's that integral either to what we need to do in our, our next meeting.
That's, that's good for building the framework down the road.
Right.
Plan for, but yeah.
It's not essential to have for the next meeting. So my question then on the, on the steps is, uh, do you feel that the subcommittee? Needs to have any type of a task between now? And next PC meeting?
Other than what? Andy suggested I.
I, I could try to reach out, but there's really not much for us to do at this point because. We're, you know, we, we don't, we, there's really no direction at this point, so.
Yeah.
I, I was just asking the question because, um, at, at our last meeting, the, uh, decision was that. We wouldn't meet until we had this meeting to have a conversation. And so I was just wondering whether there were any tasks. On Barbara's list or what some of the things that Andy and I and Norman have said or, or Howard. That you would want action on that would not be one single person. If the answer's no, then we don't meet till next time.
I guess, no, I, I think, yeah. We just take a little side road here and, and, and look at what zoning could. And, and, you know, what the shortcomings would be as well, but, um, what it could mean.
Right, even if we took Bristol's document, just say, well, if we, if we adopted this. Here's the gains, here's what we would be better for rolling town if we had this document. That's what we have to come up with, why this document is going to be better for rolling town and for all its citizens.
Yeah.
So if, if we're going to do that, that's a, that's a lengthy document, I, I would want to do like ten pages of it.
No, no, I'm saying we just use it and go through and just say, let's, let's pick the good points out as we. Look, look at the document, okay, this paragraph gives us. An advantage for doing this over having nothing.
The zoning.
Exactly, though the zoning and the, 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 yeah, we have to make the entire, the, the entire thing go on. The fact that we can't have the subdivision regulation without the zoning. And the zoning is going to bring other advantages. First of all, I mean, the, the greater gain of the town. Be able to control larger posses.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what are the good points of this?
Exactly.
And, you know, from Bristol and, and Bill, if you.
Is that Bristol's?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
And Bill, if you would, um, continue to share any zoning or unified. Uh, bylaws that the towns that you reach out to share with you. And maybe ask, you know. If they can, they can possibly think of another town.
Is Bristol's document online? Oh, okay.
It is. Okay, so I think we've got. A plan here. Everybody understand what they're doing between now and the next meeting, which would be?
The next meeting is twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth after Memorial Day, okay.
So you'll let us know if we're. Going. Participate in a select board meeting.
No.
We won't.
No, I, I think we, we need to, we need another. No, I I think we we need to, we need another group meeting. Get our ducks in.
As what Andy was saying with respect to um, getting um, a consensus among. The PC about the reasons why we think we need.
Yeah, and just to make sure, I mean, there's quite a few people absent tonight, just everyone knows what we're doing.
I think if that's the conversation, next meeting, then the June third meeting could be the discussion. The June third Select Board meeting. That'd be right after.
Bill, can you do me a favor? Can you, this will kill my printer. Would you print out one of? These full.
The whole one or just the just?
The whole, well, well, actually, I guess I don't need the whole thing, because I have the, I have the subdivision.
Just the cutout, just the Bristol, just the subdivision part of it, or?
No, I have the subdivision part. I printed that um, as I've been working through it, but the um.
Wait a minute, you can you can have that one. I'll print out another one at work.
Oh, oh, okay, great. There we go.
I don't want to pull one out, I'll just.
Yeah, I mean, I have it online, but it's, I I sometimes.
It's a hundred pieces of paper. Well.
No, fifty, because, yeah, this is from front to back, so. Um, I will make my way through that. I won't have to go. I mean, I've got the insert for the subdivision regulations. And the definitions are less important, but if we're gonna be doing homework on this for next time. I might be able to pull out a couple of bullet points from the other ninety pages or eighty pages.
Excellent.
Not that we haven't already gone over this a number of times, but um.
Okay, let's try to move through some of these other items. I think we can. I don't think they'll take nearly as much discussion. Um, Pocket Park Phase One, if you will.
And we have two documents.
Is next, yes, if anyone needs copies.
Oh, you've got big ones. I have small ones.
Well, I've got both. This you may not.
I have these two.
This is. Yes, that to Andy too. That is what we suggested we would do. For the grant that we didn't get, but essentially, it 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 just focuses on the southern end.
You're talking about the the less detailed ones.
The the smaller one.
Smaller one.
The smaller one.
Smaller one in the sense of.
And the less, less detailed.
Yep, fewer numbers.
So um, you know, this is just for reference for you folks of what we. What we thought we want to put in. So I'm wondering, um, got a short list here of what we could propose to the Select Board. Um, as Phase One, and that would be clearing the invasives and the dead trees. And the whole parcel. Parking lot expansion perhaps. I'd like us to talk about. I'd like us to address the, the, some of the people who who still would like to see a boat launch. On the southern end. Uh, and I'd like to maybe come to some consensus there. And then I think we should set up a meeting with the new um, full-time rec director. Uh, in the summer, when he takes over his job. So those are just some ideas I had for Phase One. Um, anything missing there?
Barb?
Yeah.
That boat launch that just keeps coming up and coming up, that that's gotta come to a head. I mean. I I see so much negative stuff about that, that that just, really, I think should go away and and uh, we really. Need to come to an agreement on it. It it sounds to me like it's a very dangerous uh, thing to have there. And Andy, you you, I think. Need to comment last week or last meeting we had.
Let's everybody just look at that aerial view of the river. And that tells you all, you know, I I went down to the, I said, you'll be a hundy dogs down the stream before you have control. So it's, I I just, and look at the, and look at the topographical map right there of how steep it is coming in. Yep.
Not to mention, there's no place to put out.
Put it to, exactly. So I I think it should, we should just forget that completely.
And and that could be part of Phase One, is like eliminate the boat line. It could, or or it's or it's just not, it's a process of elimination. I mean, it's not there. On Phase One. That, or we we make a more strident or have a more strident position on it.
Well, it's a liability issue. Right?
You would think.
Yeah, we're not, we're not recommending it. We're not planning for it. We're not doing it, so.
It it has, you know, at at one point, you know, the the more detailed map, we had moved it up. Closer to like the bridge. Um, thinking that, you know, there, we would divide the traffic. You know, it'd be the serious boaters that would go up there and then the regular folk. Would be at the picnic tables and the overlook and stuff like that. I, yeah, I I'm not sure that makes any difference in safety.
Can I off?
Less liability.
Yeah. Can I offer a a question? Is there any place along the Otter Creek? In Rutland Town beyond the bridge? That would be appropriate for a boat launch.
I've never walked it, so I don't know.
I don't know.
But you have such a short run down to the falls in Proctor.
Yeah, oh, it's all private land, okay.
Yeah, it's mostly farmland.
And there's no, like I said, there's nowhere to get the boats out at the other, everything's private till you get to the waterfall, like that, that's not, that's not a good plan, so.
And you can't get beyond the falls. You have to do portage over the falls, right?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
At Proctor, I mean.
Yeah.
You even have the portage to like get out before the falls. It's like, it's it's all over, I mean, there's no path.
So why? What would be the, what would be the value of doing that? Just, I I see zero myself on.
That's probably, it's a great, was a great idea.
But the logistics are.
Logistics, I mean, if you put a boat launch in and the area floods, it's probably gonna destroy the boat launch. So, like, it just. I think we, I think we need to focus our efforts on something we can actually do.
Okay, so.
So uh, anything else to add to this list or subtract? So we'll we'll say we have. We do not recommend the boat launch.
We don't, right. I mean, Howard, what do you think?
Yeah, I but I think that, you know, too bad jury wasn't here because I believe. That on the north side of the bridge where the the sewage pump station is, I believe he's put a kayak or canoe in there. You know, at some point and went on towards Proctor and and so. I'm pretty sure I heard, overheard him saying that once, so he would, he would be a perfect person to talk to. But other than that, all I've heard from others is that that those rapids up there are so dangerous that somebody's gonna lose their life. Trying to get into a, get into the river.
We we don't want that.
And there's so many better places. If you go in um, downstream of the Proctor Falls, you've got a huge. A long, long area where there's places you can take kayaks in and out. The stream isn't running as fast and. Yeah, you know, it's just a much safer situation. You can go just about, I don't believe there's anything between Proctor and Middlebury. As far as.
It would be an obstacle.
That's an obstacle, right?
Yeah.
And just in that, you know, between and up in Chittenden, Lake Bomazin, you know, there's just better areas. So for this, are we talking about just doing one, two, three? And nine?
One, two, three, nine. That's in Phase One. This is gonna, these nine points are gonna, or ten points are gonna be broken into three phases.
Um, nine. Is.
Remover covered two pipe ends.
Okay.
And really, that's. Just getting in there and clearing stuff out. And put in a couple of signs up.
Got combined sewer overflows too, which are. Not that conducive to. To attracting boaters. Which may be a good thing, but. Okay, so in on the small map, Andy is suggesting uh, Phase One be number one.
Yep.
The parking number two, right?
Yep, one, two.
Three.
Three.
And nine.
Mm-hmm, and possibly, I mean, certainly four can't cost that much money. Well, no, let's leave four out of there for now.
We can, we can wait for, like, when we do the overlook and the. Picnic tables and. Do all that. Uh, I I would just like to get, you know, part of me just wants to get things moving.
Yep, yes.
Howard, are you following on the, on the map?
I'm looking at a map, but I was looking at it, and you know, don't forget that the fire district's gonna be putting in a. A pressure reducing vault right up near Business Route Four. And I I, we don't have the exact location of it yet, but it's gonna go in there someplace between Simon's Avenue and the river. But one, once that's in, it's it's not gonna be a problem. It's just gonna be a, a cement vault and.
And. Oh, so it's gonna go on the new parcel, the new land, the new town parcel?
It's, I'm I'm talking about next to Route, Business Route Four. On the.
Okay.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong map here. I'm not sure.
Are you looking at the um, uh, at the strip of land between Simon's Ave and uh, the creek?
Yes, yeah. And it's up, but it's right up close to Route Four, Business Route Four.
So you are looking at that corner that's bounded by Business Route Four, Simon's Ave and the uh, the Otter Creek.
That's correct. Somewhere is in there, there's gonna be a, a good sized uh, manhole vault put in. It's a, the water line, the water line runs right through there, goes from, from the bridge and it goes to the fire station. And so it's gonna be on that water line, but it's, but it's pretty.
I see.
It's pretty close to the highway.
Yeah, so it's probably um, in the V Trans right away?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So they will take care. Any, any land disturbance, um, I think we would have an issue with the Division of Historic Preservation. And maybe some of the tribes. So if if V Trans wants to go through that first. With that exercise, what's the timetable, Howard?
It should begin before winter.
Okay, so that's twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, it should be, it should be in this year. Yeah, hopefully, maybe in the fall.
Okay, so that doesn't really affect the Pocket Park.
No.
No, no, it's on the, and the only thing is unless the monument that you're gonna move down from up.
That's not in Phase One, I don't think, Howard.
But that's not a very, but I mean, that's, that's the closest uh, conflict we would have, where wherever the monument goes and wherever this. Fire district, uh.
You're not looking at that in Phase One, right?
Okay.
Well, not, not necessarily, but we could, um. Howard, are you looking at both sides of the, possible both sides of the river?
No, 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 it's just.
The west side.
It's on the west side, between, between Simon's Avenue and the river.
Okay.
My understanding is he's up here. He's somewhere up there.
Right, but the the uh. The DAR thing is over here.
That's what's gonna be placed?
Is it?
I thought it was gonna be placed over here by the signboard.
Oh, with.
Originally.
Originally, and then we talked about, but for the purposes of them. Having space to get their vault in.
Why don't we let them get the vault in and then we can make a determination of it?
Right. Okay, one, two, three, and nine for Phase One and a meeting with Mike Rowe?
Yep.
Okay, this summer, okay. Anyone wanna make a motion to that effect?
You read one?
Probably not.
Make a motion though, just so it's clear that we we uh, for Phase One, we include. Items one, two, three, and nine.
I'll second that.
I'm trying to look for a label on this map.
We, let's say that's the, the, let's use the map date, one twenty-two twenty-four.
Fine.
Where is that?
It's in the legend on the right hand side.
Oh, one twenty-two twenty-four, okay, yep.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Post? Okay.
See, the movable of the, of the watering trough isn't in any of these items, though, right, that we have here?
It is in this one, the larger, the the map from the earlier map.
It's the early one, okay.
The five twenty-five twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, that's.
It's in, it's in number one. We move it across the river.
Right, and put, I see where it is there, um, but I I I would think that should be Phase Two after we get the sign cleaned up.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it didn't make it into the small map because that was a recreational trails grant and didn't.
Didn't seem appropriate.
One of the many things didn't quite fit. Okay, um, River Corridor Ordinance, I cannot, I have not had an audience with Kyle Madash. Um, he is incredibly busy with, and all of a sudden it became field season um, for him and and other. People that do the river work. And when I do get to talk to him, uh, part of the conversation will be about. What is the point of river corridors in Vermont? Um, right now, will, will there be a future for the? The the financial benefits? It will, the state be, continue to keep track of who has river corridors and who doesn't? And number three. The federal government is not. It has started a process where it's not recognizing federal disasters, major disasters anyway. So it doesn't, so it, the money doesn't have to be spent and, and that the argument kind of goes away. What, what disaster? In other words, so, so that'll be the conversation with with him.
I'm hoping that's a temporary perspective that will not hold up for very long.
Right.
We're gonna continue to have disasters, whether people want to recognize them or not.
Yeah, um. You know, we still have the main rationales for river corridors.
Yep.
That's, it's safer for people uh, that own the property, it's safer for people downstream. But without the financial incentives, it's, makes it a much harder sell.
Sure. But who knows? With the new administration, at a different point in time, it might be a different story.
Right.
Right, so we might have our work done for us and then we just get the benefit of the incentive that somebody decides in the future is. Worth investing in.
But let me double check all that stuff with with Kyle and.
Sure.
See what the state's thinking is.
Really, the ordinance should be good enough that it's. It doesn't matter what the financial incentives are.
You're you're absolutely right, that's what Barbara was.
And because.
Maybe it can be worked in what we're, what we've been talking about this evening.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, why not? It's another ordinance. Make it part of the unified. Um, regulations.
Okay, um. Announcements. Announcements. Uh, a couple meetings ago at the Select Board, there was a discussion with the lawyer who was working on the Act Two Fifty permit for the, uh, the mall. And I think you probably saw some of the press coverage. Um, he, he's currently working on an Act Two Fifty permit to demolish the mall, um, everything except Spartan Arena, and they're gonna keep the Kmart building. And they're gonna do some stormwater treatment up there, so that's what he's working on. Uh, his name was David Grasek. He, uh, he mentioned that he would be just perfectly fine with uh speaking to the Planning Commission at any point if we had any questions. Maybe as we get a little, as he gets a little further along, we'll have him give us an update.
Sure.
And let's see, one other thing that I have, and I'm not sure what you folks have, um. The updated Act Two Fifty, the Act One Eighty-One. There is, we, we've mentioned the tiers where there would be um, less Act Two Fifty, uh, decision-making about development, be more freedom to do development. Um, there's another tier that is just uh concerns critical natural resource areas uh where development might need more oversight, and that process uh is just getting started with the state. And so there is a, the first public engagement meeting later this month, May twenty-second, so this is Tier Three, and this is the rulemaking process. So there is a um, a hybrid meeting on May twenty-second. I'm not, I, I, I'm not sure we have any
Thursday, right?
natural resource areas. Yes, Thursday. That, can I, can any of you folks think of any areas that we would want more protection? That we would like to say, or maybe not housing there, or maybe not subdivisions there?
That we don't already have on the uh land use map?
Yeah. I don't know if we do.
I mean, anything that we do would be in, you know, like floodplains anyway, wouldn't they?
Well, I don't know if we've got any um any, anything, you know, with altitude that we want to protect? This, a lot of it's already conserved. Yeah, our town.
I can't, I can't think of anything. We've got our view sheds, but.
But yeah, that's not, not exactly the same thing.
No, right.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yep.
Anyone else have announcements? Okay, the minutes of April seventeenth?
Move to approve, second.
On the table. Pretty concise, succinct.
Yep.
It helps to have to go in executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes is seventeenth of April, please say aye.
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 Post? Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
So, uh, you know, I.